Hey, good evening, everyone. This is David Vitter from Washington, D.C., and thanks for being on our virtual town hall meeting. This is something a little new we're doing tonight. Many of you are participating in this town hall meeting via telephone. We've certainly done that before, and that works just as it has in the past, so you can participate, hit pound three, get on the line, ask a question, make a comment, get in line to do that. But in addition, we're also telecasting this town hall meeting on our website. So you may also be looking at our website on your computer. In that case, you see me live, and you can also hear the whole town hall meeting and participate that way. So if you want to do that and aren't at your computer already, you can go to your computer and plug us in at my website, www.vitter.senate.gov. vitter.senate.gov. Either way, we're really happy to have you at this town hall meeting. If you're on the website, you might notice this is a brand-new website we've just introduced. I think it's really well-designed, very accessible, very easy to use. And so whether you're there right now or merely on the telephone, I'd love for you to go at your convenience to our website and use it as often as possible. It has a lot of great information, also has easy email access, so you can sign up for regular email newsletters, or post a message, get it to me by email. And again, the way you do that is go to the website, www.vitter.senate.gov. Over this virtual town hall meeting, we'll be explaining some of the features of the website. A lot of different pages you can access, policy pages, issue pages, background on me, our offices around the state, all of that, but we'll do that in a little bit. The other topic we're going to talk about tonight substantively is spending and debt. I absolutely believe that is the biggest economic challenge we face. You know, we just pulled through a horrible economic time that started in 2007 and 2008, led to the most serious recession we've experienced since the Great Depression, and also the failure of many financial institutions, and the bailout, unfortunately, of many financial institutions. Unfortunately, I think we're headed toward a new and different economic crisis unless we set our fiscal house in order, unless we control federal spending and debt. And that's what we're going to talk about substantively tonight. Our overall debt at the federal level is over $16 trillion. $16 trillion with a T. That's the size of our entire annual economy in the United States. And so that one-to-one debt-to-GDP ratio, that is the measure, the metric, that most economists say is particularly important. And the fact that it's one-to-one, that our overall federal debt is as big as our entire national economy, is horrible, and means we're headed for real trouble unless we get on a different path, unless we control spending and debt and bring down deficits and debt. I've proposed a number of important things to get us there: immediate cuts, a balanced budget amendment. If we do these common-sense reforms, I think we can get on a sustainable fiscal path in the not-too-distant future. And so that's what we'll be talking about tonight. Again, if you haven't already done this, and you want to join the conversation, directly make a comment or question, just press star three on your telephone keypad, star three. And also, if you're looking at my website, there's a way you can type in email essentially, or text a comment or question, and we'll go to some of those as well. So with that, let's start the conversation particularly about spending and deficit and debt. I'm going to take some questions that have been sent to us through our website. Let me look at some of those. Let's go to Mike Emery. He writes in, "I and many of my conservative friends are curious, why do you not join Rand Paul during his filibuster last week?" Well, I'd be happy to talk about that. That's not directly about spending and debt, but it's certainly very important. Rand Paul led a filibuster in the Senate about drones, and we were able to score a significant victory to clarify U.S. policy about drones. I agreed with Rand on that issue completely, and I supported his efforts in a lot of different ways. The only reason I didn't join him on the Senate floor that particular day is because I was back in Louisiana, had to be back in Louisiana for an important family commitment. But I talked to him, he knows I support him in the effort, and I think we scored a significant victory in that way. Now let's go to some of our calls, and let's go to, let's see, Victor Melinda in New Orleans. Victor, you're on. What is your comment or question? Yes, sir, I think you're on. Can you hear us? The Melinda family? No? Okay. Let's go to another call. Luke, if you can scroll down. Let's go to another call. How about the Curly family in Greenwood? I think you're on. Is the Curly family there? Hello? They're asking, "Can anything be done to get the Senate moving and at least make some effort? Need to take action." We're still trying to get them on the line directly, but I can certainly answer that question. I do think we're making a little bit of progress in that regard. Namely, we are going to actually debate and vote on a budget next week in the Senate. And I think the majority in the Senate will vote on and pass a budget next week, first time in five years. That's ludicrous that we haven't done it in five years, but finally, we're going to do it. As you probably know, the Senate and the House each addressing the budget and passing a budget is actually a requirement of the law. But Harry Reid and the majority in the Senate haven't done that in five years. Why not? Well, one reason is, although it's a requirement in law that we do it, there is no consequence in the law if we don't. And it's politically easier for Harry Reid to just ignore that requirement and let his liberal members avoid difficult votes on these spending and debt questions, and that's what he's done. So why are we going to be voting on a budget next week? Well, one thing's changed recently, and that is that the Republican House passed a provision attached to the latest extension of the debt limit that is pretty simple and straightforward. It says if either body fails to pass a budget any year, the members of that body don't get paid. Well, guess what? That got Harry Reid's attention. That got some members' attention. And so finally, after Harry Reid has shirked his responsibility for five years, four and a half going on, five years, finally, we're going to get to debate and vote on a budget next week. That'll be an important exercise. I certainly would guess I'm going to vote no on that budget because it will be a liberal Democratic Harry Reid budget, but at least we'll have the debate, including being able to bring important amendments to the Senate floor, have those important debates, and vote on those important amendments. Okay, let's go to the Durfee family in Baton Rouge. You're on the line. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vitter.
Sure.
I would like to see the Senate get together with the House and go through the budget of last, the last continuing...
Resolution, correct.
And start line by line, seeing what they could get out.
Right.
For instance, Planned Parenthood should never be in a budget.
Right. Well, I agree with you. Problem is, the majority in the Senate under Harry Reid don't, but I agree with you completely. We are doing something a bit close to that, and let me explain what I mean. We're taking up a continuing resolution, which is a bill to look back at last year's budget and modify it in certain respects, and pass it for the rest of this fiscal year, from now until October 1st. And we are doing that as we speak, both the House and the Senate. And I do think we'll end up with a final product that looks back at last year, modifies it, tweaks it, and passes that as a spending plan for the remainder of this fiscal year. It won't be perfect by a long shot, but I do think that's a step forward. First of all, it's going to be able to deal with the sequester in a responsible way to avoid any real pain and dislocation. I'll get to the, back to the sequester in a minute. But secondly, it is a bit of the sort of exercise you're talking about. Start with last year's spending, look at that, tweak it, cut some things, modify it in important respects. Now, I certainly have a lot of ideas, including defunding Planned Parenthood, which you mentioned, that I want to do in that continuing resolution. Unfortunately, some of those things won't pass the Senate because it's controlled by liberals under Harry Reid, but we'll still have that debate and have those votes, but it's a great idea. Okay, let's go to the Allen family next, in Alexandria, Louisiana. The Allen family, you're on the line?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
You answered my question, the first one. I must put a mix up. I was wondering why Senator Reid, you get by with just taking over the Senate and not letting you folks work. Isn't there some way to provide some measure? That's dictatorial. That's not democratic. Is there any way to stop that?
Well, it absolutely is dictatorial, and with regard to the budget, I think we have addressed it because of this provision I mentioned. So again, to briefly summarize, the Republican House passed a provision, we passed it through the Senate, that said if either body fails to pass an annual budget, which is its responsibility under federal law, then members of that body won't get paid. That's what's forcing Harry Reid to take up a budget and have a real debate and real votes for the first time in five years. Now, that's not balancing the budget yet by a long shot, but at least it's a step in the right direction, so we have an actual debate, so we have actual votes, and we'll end up at least with a Senate blueprint and a very different conservative House blueprint, and we can have a national discussion about that. I think that's an important step in the right direction. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let's go to the Williams family in Baton Rouge. Go ahead. Yes, the Williams family, Baton Rouge, are you on the line? No? Okay. Let's go to the Sermon family in Benton. You're on the line?
How you doing, Senator Vitter?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing fine, thank you. I was wondering if the House and the Senate Republicans, we've been standing with Paul Ryan, but...
Yeah.
They don't understand, hey, for, I was thinking, I think the Democrats are proposing that the Republicans, all the Republicans, don't want to be on a different page.
Well, it's a great comment and a great suggestion. First of all, I work with others on that every day. Not to make excuses, it's a little bit difficult because when you're in the minority and you don't have the White House, there's no single obvious leader like a sitting president is for his party. It's a lot easier to coordinate that and have folks follow that lead when you have somebody of your party, your philosophy, sitting in the White House. But look, we need to do better, and I work on that with other conservatives all the time. In this budget discussion, I think we will center, for the most part, around the Ryan budget proposal. It's not perfect, but it is a very good step in the right direction. It's responsible, and it balances the budget in 10 years. And so not only will the House pass that budget, but Republicans here in the Senate will talk about that, propose that, advance it, and put a lot of those ideas in individual amendments, and will try to amend the Harry Reid budget. So we are taking that lead. We are coordinating our ideas and our message in important ways. So it's a great suggestion and a great comment. Let me go back and mention, as I said at the beginning, one of the things we're highlighting tonight is our brand-new website, and I want to go to some features of the website. Many of you are listening on the phone like you do in a normal telephone town hall, but this town hall is also a virtual town hall meeting, and it's also on my website. Real-time footage, real-time audio, you can see me, talk to me, type in questions, participate through my website. And that website is www.vitter.senate.gov. If you can right now, I'd invite you to go to that website, or in the future, tomorrow or the next day, go to that website. First of all, it has a lot of great information. Secondly, I think it's organized in a really user-friendly and attractive way. So it has a lot of information that you can easily navigate through, go to different sorts of things. Let me give you some for instances, and for those of you on the computer now, that particular page of the website will come up to illustrate what I'm talking about. One thing great about the website is very easy email access. So if you want to correspond with me through email, send regular ideas, suggestions, questions, and have me respond, just go to the website, www.vitter.senate.gov, and there is an easy way to type in an email, and also to sign up for an email newsletter. That's a great way to communicate with me on an ongoing basis. If you're there right now, there's also a way to text in a comment or question for this conversation, so you can do that. Second thing on the website is all my contact information. We not only have an office, of course, in Washington, D.C., we have offices around the state, and so there's a page you can click on. If you're on the computer now, it'll be coming up, and it shows you the office nearest you, the telephone number, the fax number, how you can communicate with us through that office. And that's real easy to navigate through and real easy to understand as well. Another feature of the website is recent news, recent press releases, what I've been doing recently. There's a page that highlights that, that highlights some of my recent activity, and that's easy to use. We have another page devoted to issues, every, really every important issue under the sun. You can click on that. It lists all the main issue areas, and then you click on that issue area, and it gives you important information about what Congress is doing or not doing with regard to that issue, and what I am proposing with regard to that issue. Another page we have on the website is sort of a press page, recent press releases, recent news items that I have been involved in, so you can certainly go to that as well. So those are just some of the things that you can access from our website. Again, if you're at a computer now, try us out, www.vitter.senate.gov. And you can see me live in this virtual town hall on the website. Or tomorrow, the next day, next week, look us up at our website and start accessing information and establishing direct contact with me through the website. Okay, with that, let's go back to the virtual town hall meeting and discuss important issues like spending and debt. And one thing I wanted to touch on that one of our previous callers touched on is this sequester, these automatic across-the-board cuts. Let me give you my general approach and general attitude about the sequester. I think we clearly can deal with the level of cuts involved in this sequester. Overall, the cuts, the so-called across-the-board cuts involved in this sequester is only 2.4% of the entire budget. And when you look at actual impact this year, it's actually half of that. It's actually 1.2%, about $43 billion. Now, every family in Louisiana deals, has to deal with cuts to their budget that are far more serious than that on a regular basis, particularly in tough times like we are. Every Louisiana small business figures out how to cut their business budgets by far more than that. So overall, we can absolutely deal with this level of cuts, and we need to if we're going to even begin to get a hold of our spending and debt situation. Now, I do think the across-the-board nature of these cuts aren't the best way to do it, and I do think these cuts are weighted too much toward the military. Defense is 18% of the budget, but it's getting 50% of these cuts. So I do think we should address that in meaningful ways, and I hope we will through this continuing resolution, which we're going to pass in the near future. If we do that right, we will give departments more flexibility. If we do it right, we will lessen defense cuts and allow that to be borne by other areas of the budget, because 18% of the budget shouldn't receive 50% of the cuts. But particularly if we create that flexibility, we can absolutely deal with this level of cuts. If you're on the computer now, you're looking at a graph, and what this graph illustrates is federal spending adjusted for inflation from 1940 until the present date. First of all, as you can see, federal spending has gone through the roof. It's skyrocketed. The other thing you can see that spent is that federal spending in the last four years under President Obama has leaped up. It has dramatically increased under President Obama. And the final thing you see is a tiny, tiny red line at the top of the overall 2012 spending line, and that is the sequester cut. And as you can see, if you're looking at the computer at this graphic, that sequester cut is trivial, 2.4% compared to overall federal spending. And that's after that federal spending has leaped, has grown by leaps and bounds, particularly in the last four years, but also long-term from 1940 until now. So I think, you know, a picture says a thousand words, and I think that chart does that and really summarizes the sequester in a very meaningful way. Okay, let's go back to your calls and comments about that. Let's go to the Repolo family in Baton Rouge. Go ahead.
Yes, Senator, thank you very much for the work you're doing, and we appreciate the town hall meeting.
Well, thank you.
I enjoy them, and I think they have a lot of confidence. But I wanted to mention is the, in postings, this, and, 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 they listed seven items the other night, things like the study in the monkey activities in Africa, watching the sharks out off of California, and, and, I think they said those seven is something like $2, $5 billion.
Right.
You have, you know, allotted or whatever. That's one. Number two, my main point here is, what about all of this foreign aid that we're sending over there, and 90% of it is going in the pockets of guys like Farzad and his other ones?
Yeah.
We have no control over it, and we need to cut that out.
Yeah.
True, send them a little money, sure, we want to help, we want to be, but I mean, we need, we cannot take money, you know, those are people that we need, we need, you know, to take care of, and we're sending that over, then turn around and cut our military, cut my Medicare, and things like that.
Right.
We have a direction we're going, it's just totally, it's like the way that we spoke this live out in the middle.
Right. Well, I agree with you completely on both points. First of all, you're right. If we start looking at programs that should be eliminated altogether, like the ridiculous spending items you mentioned, we can take all the pain out of the sequester because we can replace these across-the-board cuts with targeted cuts. You know, in some cases, a program shouldn't be cut or should even be plus-ed up, and in a lot of cases, like the spending items you mentioned, it should be cut out 100%, and that's what we need to do, and I hope that's what we're going to start to do, at least, at least start to do in a responsible way with this CR. We'll see over the next few weeks. And I also agree with you on the second point. Some foreign aid can be a useful tool, but we don't put any springs on it, strings on it, for the most part, and we don't demand basic things from the countries we're trying to help. First of all, we shouldn't be spending, sending any foreign aid to outright enemies, folks who are clearly working against it. Secondly, for countries that may potentially work with us, we need to put requirements on that foreign aid, pure and simple, pure and simple, and make sure we institute reforms, make progress based on that. But certainly in a lot of the cases, we shouldn't be sending it to these countries in the first place because they're fighting us, they're against us, they're never going to work with us. So I think you make a great point. Okay, let's go to the Figueroa family in Lafayette.
Good evening, Senator. I'm going to be very brief.
Sure.
As a previous caller said about foreign aid, I have a two-part question. First of all, I'm retired military, retired last year, and I moved back to, back home and started a career. The foreign aid, let me let your constituents know, as an eyewitness, the majority of it is going to countries that do not and have no intentions of, quote-unquote, "playing ball" with us. The very few that, that do should be places like Israel, our countries that are neighbors to the north, Mexico with provisions on immigration.
Right.
My real question is, looking at the Ryan budget today, proposal, and it's completely, you know, night and day compared to the Senator from Washington's budget proposal, and I'm glad to hear that you're voting against hers, but even the Ryan budget doesn't address the issue of cutting spending, it is simply slowing the growth of government. And yes, while it does balance the budget over a 10-year period, what is the real measures being done to actually cut the government instead of just simply slowing the growth?
Well, it's a great point. First of all, I understand your point completely. I agree with you. However, if we could get to a budget that balances, truly balances the budget in 10 years, that would be a huge leap forward. So I don't want to trivialize what Paul has done, but I am certainly open to deeper cuts in certain areas like the ones you mentioned. And I'm not only open to it, I've voted for those cuts in the past, I've put my name on the line, I've cast that vote, I've proposed those. So I certainly intend to continue supporting those sorts of items in areas where we should go a lot further. So a great comment. Okay, let's go to the Gross family in Pineville.
Yes. My question was concerning tuition assistance for the GIs, and that's another one where they're hitting the military. Saw in the newspaper the other day, but they say that it's temporary, but I'm wondering if it's part of the budget, the budget cutting toward the military, because tuition assistance for service members is a primary recruiting factor for the GIs.
Absolutely.
And I myself joined because of tuition assistance in the 80s and retired as an R N with the state, and this is, this is unacceptable, and GIs do not have, when you sign up, you are no longer part of the judicial resources a GI is owned. They no longer have any recourse.
Right. Well, I agree with you, and it is yet another example of where military folks are getting cut too much, at least proportionate to other things. Like I said, defense is 18% of the budget, it's getting 50% of the cuts, so that's a prime area where we shouldn't touch that, we should do some other cuts to replace that. That's what we're trying to do moving forward through the CR and other things. So a great comment. Why don't we take a web question? Again, for those of you who may be just joining us, if you're on the phone, tonight works just like a normal telephone town hall, and we're happy for you to participate over the phone. If you haven't already, press star three, and that puts you in line to make a comment or ask a question. But tonight is also a virtual town hall meeting, so it's being broadcast on my website. If you're at a computer, you can go to my website, www.vitter.senate.gov. vitter.senate.gov. You can see a live stream of me, the tele, the video, virtual town hall meeting, and you can participate that way, and you can type in a comment or question. So we're going to go to a couple of those. First of all, let's go to the Brown family. I'd like to know what you're doing to stop the President from usurping the Constitution by going around Congress with his executive orders? That's a great question, and that's a big concern of mine. I'm involved in a number of different actions to push back on what I consider unconstitutional actions by the administration, by the President, actions that go beyond his proper constitutional authority. And there are 10, 20 cases I could talk about. Let me mention a couple. One is significant, we scored a significant victory. Some outside citizens groups filed suit claiming that President Obama unconstitutionally made some appointments because he said there were recess appointments, but the Senate was not in recess. And so that went to the courts, and the courts, federal courts, just ruled in favor of these private citizens who said the President's action was unconstitutional. As a member of the Senate, I helped file an amicus brief, a friend-of-the-court brief, backing up that argument, and we won in federal court. Now it's going to move on to the U.S. Supreme Court, but I am very hopeful that that will be upheld, and the U.S. Supreme Court will rule in our direction again. And that is a major blow to President Obama's unconstitutional actions. I'll give you a second example of where I'm involved, and that in particular has to do with the EPA and actions the EPA has taken beyond its proper constitutional authority. I just became the top-ranking Republican on the committee... I just became the top-ranking Republican on the committee that oversees the EPA, that has jurisdiction over the EPA. Now conservatives like me are not the majority on that committee. The Senate is Democratic majority, and so every committee is Democratic majority. In this case, that committee is led by Barbara Boxer, an ultra-left liberal from California. So she's not going to agree with me on any of this stuff, but still, as the top-ranking Republican, we're pushing back, asking a lot of questions, doing a lot of oversight, demanding answers to our questions on these areas where the EPA has superseded its authority. And the President has just nominated someone to become the new head of the EPA. That's important because that nomination has to be confirmed by a 2/3 vote of the United States Senate, and I'm certainly going to use that opportunity as leverage to demand answers to these very fundamental, important questions we have been asking about how the EPA has been run, and I'm demanding answers to those questions and will continue to in the future. Let's go to one more web question that's coming in over my site, and this is from Josh. What real effect do the state nullification movements and laws have on any new restrictive federal gun control laws? In your opinion, are federal gun laws beyond those that support the Second Amendment constitutional with consideration of the Tenth Amendment? Josh, that's a great question, and it's a very detailed question. Let me say a couple of things. First of all, as you probably know, I am a 1,000% fervent supporter of the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment is a central constitutional right. The Supreme Court has correctly said that it is a personal right. It's not just about state militias, it's a personal, individual right, and we need to be vigilant and protect that. So I'm concerned about a lot of the proposals in this current gun debate. I'm concerned that they restrict the Second Amendment, and they are unconstitutional, and I'll be fighting those proposals. I think our first and best option, of course, is to defeat those proposals in Congress. I don't know if we'll defeat all of them in the Senate, I'm more hopeful that the Republican House will defeat unconstitutional proposals. But if any pass, certainly would have to litigate those, and certainly would have to rely on the Second Amendment and the Tenth Amendment and related provisions of the Constitution. In that context, the more states that pass these state nullification statutes and actions, the better. I don't think that alone will undo federal law, but I do think the more states that do that, the more state legislators and governors that speak out, that act through that nullification movement, the better. I think that is a very strong sign of what the heartland of America thinks and feels on the issue. So a great question. Okay, let's go to the Harris family in Covington.
Hello, good evening, Senator.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Harris. My question to you is, that's to relate with the budget, and it seems like President Obama now has his own private army that he's building, 1.6 billion bullets, 2,700 light armored vehicles, and a force that he uses, and he calls it, or somebody calls it, the FEMA force, which to me looked a lot like online, looked like a lot of paramilitary people, and I'm wondering how this got funded?
Right.
And what is this going to be used for? Because frankly, this scares me beyond belief.
Right. Well, I understand your concern, and I share most of your concerns, and I've been asking a lot of questions about that, demanding answers. We don't have all the answers yet, but I'll keep fighting until we do get the answers. Most of this, as you know, is in homeland security. You mentioned FEMA, which is in homeland security, there are other parts of homeland security. Now look, some of that, some is legitimate. For instance, border security, border protection falls under homeland security, and obviously that is a meaningful function of the federal government. I don't think this administration is very serious about it, it's been doing enough, but it is a meaningful, appropriate role of the federal government. But other stuff, for instance FEMA having all these arms and weapons is obviously a lot more suspect and questionable, and that's what I've been asking, the questions about demanding answers. So we don't have a full, accurate picture yet, but I'm certainly going to fight until we do get that full, accurate picture and settle these things. And, and we may have to address this and correct this through legislation, including future spending plans. So that's a great comment. Okay, let's go to the Glenn family in Baton Rouge.
Yeah, thanks, Senator Vitter, for all the work that you're doing, I appreciate your effort. Most of my questions have been answered about the sequester, I'd just like to point out something. A while ago, about what you said about Harry Reid doesn't, there's no teeth in the law with regard to passing a budget.
Yeah.
Because there's no penalty for not passing a budget.
Right.
Uh, how do we expect to really pass a budget with the Democratic-controlled Senate when there's nothing in the law that will hold their feet to the fire? And according to my calculation, is that the sequester is only, like you said, 2.4% of the overall budget, and you know how long it's going to take to pay that off? If all we're going to save is 85 million, a billion a year?
Right.
It'll take 185 years. That's four generations of Americans.
Right.
It just seems like we continue to just shoot ourselves in the foot over and over again.
Right.
Because there's no consequences for people's actions.
Right.
And it mainly lies with the Congress of the United States, which you're a part of.
Right. Well, I agree with everything you've said. First of all, the sequester cut really is trivial in the grand scheme of things, 2.4%. And that's 2.4% as a previous caller has explained, off a growth line that's going up and up and up. That's not a real cut of 2.4%, that's 2.4% after enormous growth in federal spending over decades, but exponential growth over the last four years. So we need to go a lot further, we need to do a lot more, and I've voted to go a lot further, and I'll keep fighting to do a lot more. To go to your specific question, how do we make the Senate act on a budget? Again, I think we're at least going to get there this year. It's not going to be a good budget that Harry Reid proposes, but he is going to propose and pass one because we passed a provision that Republicans in the House demanded as part of the increase of the debt limit, which I was against, I voted against, but I do agree with this provision. It said if either body doesn't pass an annual budget as required by law, the members of that body don't get paid. So that passed into law, and that is what got Harry Reid's attention, and that is why we're finally going to have a budget debate and a whole series of important budget votes next week. Now, that is at least a step in the right direction. That will at least yield a clear Harry Reid, Obama blueprint versus a clear Republican House blueprint. That will be two very different plans, which we can have a national discussion and debate about. Now, we need to move beyond debates, we need to act, we need to cut, we need to be responsible, we need to control deficit and debt, but at least I think that's a step in the right direction. Okay, let's go to the Townsend family in Chaneyville.
Uh, thank you, Senator Vitter.
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank you for staying on the heels of the Democrats in reference to the EPA.
Absolutely.
Um, I just want to make a comment that the politicians, some of them are very poor at math, we're spending 1.3 trillion dollars a year more than we collected taxes.
Yeah.
And they think we'll be saved if we cut 1.6 trillion over the next 10 years.
Right.
And in the next 10 years, we will add 11.5 trillion to the national debt.
Right.
And in 10 years, we will be about 28 trillion in debt. So how, how can you expect that to be taken care of in 10 years?
Absolutely.
I suggest that we stop duplicating a lot of the services that we have that are federal services because each one of the services have extensions or arms, say like the home care, the homeland security.
Uh-huh.
Well, homeland security has this agency, and this agency's another agency, and they're all duplicating their services. And that should be, they, they should have a commission that looks into that and see what's going on with that and who is duplicating services.
Absolutely.
Another thing that I'm very disturbed about is the money that was given to the United Nations in January. They gave $4 billion to the Palestinian Authority, which is composed of two terrorist groups, which are the Hamas and the Palestinian Liberation Organization. And if you listen to the news yesterday, the Palestinians attacked some of our GIs over there, and what are they doing with the money that we're sending them? Are they supporting their army, or they're supporting the welfare of the people? And I just don't think that it's fair that we, we, we need to ask the Congress to fund any United Nation group that recognizes the Palestinian Authority as a state.
Yeah, I agree with you completely on all accounts. You're absolutely right, and we need to start doing that in a much more responsible way. And your first point is maybe the most powerful, do the math. You know, of every dollar that the federal government spends right now, 42 cents is borrowed money, a lot of it borrowed from China. It used to be 40 cents, now it's rising, it's 42 cents of every dollar. If you did that in your household, how long would that go on? How long could that last? If you did that in your Louisiana small business, how long could that go on? How long could that last? You just can't keep on doing that, it's absolutely ridiculous, and that's what we need to fundamentally turn around. Let me just mention a few reminders. First of all, this is a virtual town hall meeting, and so you may be on the telephone, you can participate that way, but you can also watch the entire town hall meeting and participate directly on my website, www.vitter.senate.gov. Our website is brand-new, just redone, I think it's really good-looking and easy to use and easy to navigate, and has a lot of good content on it. So whether you're on the computer now, or whether you can go to it tomorrow, the next day, I'd really encourage you to check out our brand-new, redone website, www.vitter.senate.gov. If you're on right now, we're scrolling through some of the different pages of the website that show different capability, background about me, issues, you can access recent press releases, what I'm doing that's reported in the press, sign up for an email newsletter, send an individual email, look up offices in the state. We have seven offices in every region of the state, you can click on a map where you live, it lights up the nearby office, gives you all of the contact information. So you can do all of those things. So again, check it out if you're at or near the computer now, vitter.senate.gov, or maybe tomorrow, the next day, next week, go there and check it out, and also send us thoughts, information, follow-up via email. And then, again, go back to our topic for tonight, in terms of substantive issues, the main thing we're talking about is federal spending and debt, what I've been doing to fight this growing mountain of debt, where we are, the additional progress we need to make. So with that, let's go to a call from the Nolan family in Lafayette. Yes, you're on the line, go ahead.
I'm not sure you would, you would know this, but I write to you quite often.
Oh, great. Please keep doing that, or if it's easier, use our new website, and you can email.
Sure, and I can even, close enough, I could even walk to your Lafayette office.
Good, good.
Uh, my question was concerning the Keystone XL pipeline.
Right.
What are the chances of that going through? Because that would really boost the economy.
Absolutely. It's a great question. I don't have a crystal ball, I'm not sure. Even since the election, President Obama has been dragging his feet completely on it since then, and so that's not a good sign. You know, any valid environmental issue in sight has been resolved, including the state of Nebraska, which has developed a new route for the pipeline through Nebraska. All that is fully done, fully approved by the governor and the state legislature of Nebraska. So any true issue has been resolved, but yet still, President Obama and his administration are dragging their feet, and it's four and a half years going on, five years, absolutely outrageous. And this is a great jobs project that will bring important energy from Canada, also will have on-ramps, this pipeline will have on-ramps in this country to get American energy from the Dakotas, from plain states and others, to refineries on the Gulf Coast. So it is really, really important. I'm fighting for that tooth and nail. I'm also fighting for other really important energy development. You know, the United States is the single most energy-rich country in the world, bar none, bar none. We're the most energy-rich country in the world. Russia is second, Saudi Arabia is third, but they're way below us, they have about 40% of what we have in terms of total energy resources. Problem is, we're the, we're the only country in the world that takes over 90% of our resources and puts them off limits, and says, no, 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 you can't drill off the East Coast, no, you can hardly do anything off the West Coast, no, you can do very little in offshore Alaska, no, you can do absolutely nothing in Anwar, the Alaska National Wildlife Refuge, no, you can't do anything for now in the Eastern Gulf, no, you can't develop the very oil-rich sands of the Western states, Utah and surrounding states. You know, I thought the motto was supposed to be, yes, we can, but when it comes to American energy, President Obama's motto is, no, 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 no. And that's what we fundamentally need to change, and I'm fighting for that as well. Just 10 days ago, I introduced major energy legislation which would dramatically increase those opportunities for us to produce good American energy, create good American jobs in the process, lower deficit and debt by bringing in more federal revenue from that energy activity. And I'm involved in a lot of other things directly related to that. So that's a great question. Okay, let's go to the Creer or Cryer family in Marrero.
Yes, how you doing today?
Good, how are you?
I'm okay. My question is, uh, social security.
Yes.
In Medicaid.
Yeah.
Why do you guys have to touch those two areas when people who have put into it, into the system, they're not asking for no handouts, they're only asking, including myself, asking to give us back what we put into it.
Right.
Okay? Now, like you said just now, this country is rich. If we are so rich, why is it that we have, we still have poor people here? Why is it that we still getting what, $6, $7 an hour? We should be getting at least $10, $15 an hour wage.
And if we, and if we haven't had a good economy, we could be. Now, this is a horrible economy.
With President Obama, he's just been in office four and a half years, okay?
Well, four and a half years of 8% unemployment is awfully painful.
All of this, all of this is not all on him. He's not the cause of us being into this hole that we are in. We done had three wars, the Two Desert Storm War, the Two Bushes War, and then Afghanistan War. You understand? We should not be in the debt that we are in today.
Well, first of all, let me, let me start to respond. Certainly, I agree, all of this isn't President Obama's fault, but I think a lot of it is because he took a bad situation, and in my opinion, he made it worse. He took a very weak economy, and rather than do the things that could promote a healthy rebound, he did the opposite. He increased regulation, he increased taxes, he increased burdens on, on American small business. So I, I think it's not an accident that when you do that, you don't have an economic rebound, you stay in a horrible economy. And on the deficit and debt situation, he did far more than any of his predecessors. In fact, he's done more than all of his predecessors to rack up deficit and debt. So it's not all his fault, but a heck of a lot of it, a good percentage is. So on that, we probably just disagree. In terms of social security programs like that, there do need to be reforms of that over time. I don't think they should hit current retirees. I think they should be phased in over long periods of time so people can plan. But about 2/3 of federal spending is so-called mandatory spending. But about two-thirds of federal spending is so-called mandatory spending. So, if you're going to try to balance the federal budget by not touching any so-called mandatory spending, then you'd have to get rid of everything else, all of education programs, all of defense, everything on the discretionary side. Obviously, you can't do that. So, the solution has to involve meaningful reforms, at least over time. Again, I think we should protect current retirees, those about to retire, folks who have lived by those rules for their lifetime and planned based on those rules. But if we want programs like Social Security and Medicare to be there for somebody like me who's fifty-one, or somebody like my kids in their teens and twenty, we need to reform those programs over time, and we need to cut other areas of the budget that we've talked about. So, great question. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the Brown family in Pineville. Go ahead. You're on.
Yes, Senator. My question is, does the sequester across the budget cuts apply to all branches of the government, legislative, executive, and judicial? And if not, why not? And if it does not, does it provide the perception that once again, the politicians are above the law and not under the law?
That's a great question. In fact, it does apply those places. For instance, here in the Senate, here in Congress, we're getting a cut to our budgets. Now, again, this is a real modest cut, and it's a cut from an increasing law. So, we could do a lot more, and I've proposed a lot more. But it does impact Congress as well as the executive, as well as the judiciary. And I think we can and should do more. One proposal I have, for instance, is in federal law, we have automatic pay increases for members of Congress. That's outrageous. That's ridiculous. We should get rid of that tomorrow. We should never have automatic pay increases. And if we ever need a pay increase over time, we should have the guts to put it in a bill, drop the bill on the hopper, debate it, vote on it in the open light of day. So, we should do more, but the sequester does apply to us. Okay, let's go to the Yuli family in Shreveport.
Yes, Senator, I have a question for you.
Sure.
I guess my wife would call Fox News junkie.
I am too. More power to you.
My question is that John McCain, Lindsey Graham, and you, have y'all been up there too long? Because I feel like my rights are going away. I'm a very conservative person, and y'all have been up there for years, and we're in this mess. And I want you to respond to that, just as going downhill.
Sure. Well, I'd be happy to respond. First of all, I am a firm believer in term limits. Apparently, you don't know this, but I have the leading term limits proposal in the Senate. Maybe more importantly, I passed term limits when I was in the state legislature. It was uphill, but we fought, and we passed it there, and I think the state legislature is far better as a result. But you know what? If we needed it there, and we did, we needed a thousand times more in the U.S. House and the U.S. Senate, and that's why I had the leading term limits proposal in the U.S. Senate. And we're fighting like the dickens to pass it here. It's not going to be easy. It's uphill, because two-thirds of the House and the Senate have to pass it. But that's exactly what we faced in the state legislature, and over a few years, we got it done. So, I'm not going to give up. I'm going to keep fighting. Secondly, have I been here long enough? Well, I've been here since the 2004 election. So, I've been here about eight years. Any term limits proposal that anybody has, has a longer total time of service for the U.S. Senate than that. So, I'm not at the limit, but I've been here eight years. But I completely believe in term limits and am fighting for it, because nobody in government is indispensable. Nobody is indispensable. The last thing I'd say is, I certainly understand your frustration about the direction of the country. But when you're making decisions about what people are doing, what side they're on, please look at our individual voting records. Please look at what I'm doing, what I'm fighting for, how I'm voting, because I can guarantee you on a number of important issues, it's very different than John McCain and Lindsey Graham. I agree with them on some issues, including a lot of military issues, but on other issues like immigration, it is a very different voting record. So, I'd invite you to look at that. Okay, let's go to the Fisher family in Bossier City.
Good evening, Senator.
Good evening.
My question to you is, are the Republicans going to hold the line on no new taxes, period, when it comes down to the final straw? Or are they going to cave in like they've done in the past? Because we have given, as you well know, Obama, two tax increases since the first of the year.
Right.
And the other thing is, before I let you answer, on the pipeline from Canada, one of the things that they're trying to argue is, it is oil sands that they're trying to pump through, and they're trying to say that it will deteriorate the pipeline and detonate it so it will fall apart. And this is what they're trying to argue against, allowing the pipeline to be completed.
Right. Well, great.
And I don't agree with it. And, you know, from having been in the business, and so, I feel that it is safe and can be done, but they will try anything to stop that.
Yeah. Two great questions. Let me answer them. First of all, you're exactly right on the latter point. That is nonsense from an engineering, scientific point of view. You know, you can have your own opinion, and you can have your own facts. And when you consult scientists, engineers, there is no validity to that argument. So, that's a pure political fictitious, untruthful argument. And we've explained and proved it to be that. Secondly, look, I can't speak for every Republican. I can sure as heck speak for myself, and I'm not going for any tax increase, period. And so far, we're absolutely holding to that, including in this sequester fight. You know, the fiscal cliff was a lot different situation for one simple reason. If Congress and the President didn't act, a huge tax increase happened automatically. Everybody got a big tax increase. That was the fallback position. But now, now on the sequester, it's completely different. If we don't act, cuts happen. No tax increase, but cuts happen. So, essentially, the dynamics have reversed, and essentially conservatives have the leverage and are in a much better position. And certainly, just speaking for myself, I am not supporting any tax increase, because we are not undertaxed in this country, in no way, shape, or form. The problem is spending. The problem is spending stupid, to quote and sort of tweak James Carville's quote, "It's the spending stupid." That's what's behind this unsustainable deficit and debt. Okay, great question. Let's go to the Saunders family in Chaneyville.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. And I'm saying Your Honor because I've been for so many of judges on a domestic silence case.
I'm very sorry about that.
Okay. Well, my, thank God he's now my ex-husband. After fifty-three years of marriage, I am thankful to God for having helped me. But my question is this, what are y'all doing about it? I understand he is supposed to be paying me half of his retirement. I'm just took a cut on my Social Security. It's, I can barely make it from day to day, because I'm living a little over seven hundred dollars a month. But I have to say this, if it hadn't have been for Christian friends, like my landlord and landlady, other people up in there in this bayou.
Yeah.
Where I live.
Yeah.
And I just said that, and I hope my ex-husband is not on the phone anywhere. Or maybe it's better if he would hear it. What can I do? I have asked for help. Evangel parish is the worst parish in the whole state. That's where my troubles began. I was leaving in a van, and they said.
Yeah. Well, listen, first of all, first of all, God bless you. It sounds like you've been to hell and back, and I'm really sorry to hear that. And I'll personally be praying for you. I know other folks in this virtual town hall will. Secondly, let me suggest this, every situation is different. I think the best way for me to really try to help you is for us to get the details of your situation offline. If you can call us at one of my offices tomorrow, call us, and we can get the details confidentially and figure out the best way to help you. For instance, there are a lot of legal agencies that will offer free legal help to make your case, to get the proper support under the law. And certainly, there's law enforcement to make sure you're protected. So, please call us. You know what part of the state this is, just in general? I think you're probably in Acadia. Call us at 337-993-9502, 337-993-9502. Call us tomorrow during our normal office hours. Or you can email through our website, vitter.senate.gov, G-O-V, vitter.senate.gov. And we'll confidentially understand the details of your case and go from there. But there are some agencies that can offer free legal help so that you fight for and hopefully get the support that you deserve under Louisiana law. Most of this is governed by state law, not federal. So, it's mostly Louisiana law, Louisiana law enforcement, not the feds. There is some federal law that applies. For instance, I just voted for and helped pass the Violence Against Women Act, and that is a federal law that certainly applies and helps protect women in those sorts of desperate situations. And we need to do more in that regard. But call us tomorrow. Give us the details, and we'll get actively engaged. Okay, let's go to another call. Let's go to the, let's see, how about the Igobrod family in Dequincy? Sorry if I mispronounced your name, but you're on.
That's fiscal right. And mostly, I want to just express my gratitude for the positive points you brought up.
I appreciate that.
And I have, I have a thought. I told them, referred my call to you, that I'm from the little town of Dequincy.
Sure.
And just lost faith. And I was here when they thought whether they'd forgive or not.
Yeah.
That's, that's take this.
Yeah.
You know? But I came to focus my home, and it's great to be home.
Yeah, that's great.
There are more low-ramp housing projects in this little place than I've ever seen. But it just tells me that we are resilient, we are survivors, and will make it somehow. But I do, I mean, some of the ones you had on the phone, I did not agree with their questions. I certainly understand the lady you just talked with, but I don't have any problem making it on seven hundred. And it will be cut, it will be cut again, because I'm so frisky. My brother sent a, you know, flea for his hide.
Well, you're very kind to offer those nice comments.
I had, I had a surplus that I thought it was taken care of a year ago in Alexandria, where I live, in fact. And now, the office is like Charles, because I was flat on my back after pancreatic surgery. I couldn't make the appointment that they set for me October the fourth. And nothing good has come to me from that office, but it is our nearest one. And now, they've done farther back, and now they'll start deducting till it's played four. And I still owe my brother for the first more than two thousand.
Well, listen, I don't know all the details of your situation, but let me suggest, if there's something that's being done improperly, and you'd like us, again, to look at the particulars of the situation, to get involved, please let us know the details. We shouldn't talk about it online here, but please let us know the details at my Lake Charles office. Let me mention that number, since that's nearest you in Dequincy, 337-436-0453, 337-436-0453. If we can help in any way, call us during office hours tomorrow. Let us know, and we'll get involved. But thank you very much for your kind words. Now, we're going to start wrapping up, but as we do, let me remind everybody, we have a brand-new, redesigned website. It's really chock-full of good information, very easy to use. So, if you're not online already, check us out at www.vitter.senate.gov. We also have easy email access there. This town hall meeting has not only been over the telephone, it's been a virtual town hall meeting. So, many of you have participated on the computer, looking at me live on the website, texting in comments and questions that way. And we'll do this more in the future. And finally, if we weren't able to get to your specific comment or question tonight, stay on the line. In a minute, you'll be able to record your comment or question. And if you leave your full contact information, I'll respond. I'll respond specifically to your comment or question. But of course, for me to do that, I need your full contact information. So, stay on the line and do that. With that, thanks so much for being part of this virtual town hall meeting, checking out our new website. Invite you to continue to do that in the future at vitter.senate.gov. Thanks for being a crucial part of this discussion, and good night.